Thank you, Mr. Owl. Good morning. This is a special meeting of the Finance Committee. It's October twentieth, twenty twenty five, ten A M. And this is for the Cambria Community Services District. So I just want to make sure, let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. And we have Scott online yet. Okay, so Scott is joining us. From the universe and and so he's listening in, but again, he won't be able to to speak or anything like that, but he's there. So good morning and welcome.
Are we expecting Matthew today?
That's I asked, but he's at a conference, so we'll have to have Haley and Denise give a report from what's going on. And I can help too. Yeah. So we do have a quorum. Scott let me know this morning that he is resigning from the committee and we're very sad about that. But he has other responsibilities that he needs to take care of and so I completely understand. So we'll miss you, just to let you know.
Adios amigo.
Adios amigo. So we do what we and we do have a here report. The other thing that is changing is that Keith has withdrawn from the ad hoc for the Met's Hall, but what I do want to let you know is that the Tourism Board did give us sixty thousand dollars to do repairs. And David, did you did you want to say anything about that?
That you're I'm here to be a painter for the building. I happened to walk into this.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna hear.
You're really happy, aren't you?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was supposed to have a meeting at nine. I believe Denise, we're gonna sit down, look at every year priorities and C I P list and see what we can tackle. Look at my notes, put other kind of, we already have quotes on certain ones.
Great.
So.
Great. So.
I have a question about that because I was actually at the Tourism Board meeting.
Oh.
And at that meeting, Matthew said he wanted the money to go towards flooring, painting and kitchen updates.
Yes.
But when I look at this section, it shows sound system and not kitchen.
The sound?
The the sound system is funded.
Yeah.
Meaning that it's already been funded. We have money allocated towards that project.
Okay.
Um, I believe if you look on that list, it might just be renovation. I don't know if it lists everything out. Um, I think this money from the Tourism Board is trying to do things that we don't have funded in that need to be added or priority. So this list doesn't really equate to, you know, what the tourism, I mean, I'm trying to find.
Well, and we just got the grant.
Right, yeah.
That needs to go.
So, yeah, so so that the
I know on that one there, Matt had talked, Matt and I both talked about the floors and the painting. Because the estimate that we ended up getting for the flooring was about twenty eight, twenty five to about thirty five, and then the painting was even worth from twenty five. That's our, so those are the ones that we're looking at. So the renovation of the kitchen, that's going to be about almost eighty thousand just to redo all that. So this was going to be the kickstart. We threw it into the pocket owner C I P. And then with this thing going through the Tours Board, it made a big difference on
Sure.
what we can move forward. That's why I'm here today, meeting with the painters.
Right.
I'm getting a couple more quotes to make sure that we're all within the parameter and what our guidelines are. What we're looking for.
Yeah, the refinish, we have money allocated towards refishing the floors and re-roofing a section.
Right.
Um, it's not all of it. So if the flooring came in over, which I think some of the estimates are just a little bit more than what we have allocated. That money could go to finish that. I mean, I think everyone can look at the floors and that's like is one of our priorities. Um, but that sound system has been funded, so that's probably why he is saying that we're going to do other projects that are not funded.
Okay, because I know you've allocated sixty thousand from the current budget and then the Tourism Board gave you another sixty.
Sixty thousand for, I have fifty for the sound system.
No, if we did in, we did have sixty thousand for the floors and the roof.
And combined, I mean, I'm twenty two thousand seven hundred for the flooring and seventeen thousand for the re-roofing.
But that was
That's sixty.
No, but that was gonna come out of reserve.
Yes.
Right. So now it doesn't have to come out of reserve.
Or or we're gonna do things on top of that. Yes, yes.
Because now you have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Well, maybe.
And I know Matthew is also meeting next week with the five oh one C groups to hopefully
Yeah.
get even more money.
That would be good.
And like, Mr. Gary said, we haven't really sat down with Matt to see like what our priorities will be, so I can't say exactly what he he's thinking, but we do have money allocated for some of these things. And so I would imagine this is extra money we would like to do more, not what we already have funded.
Right.
Yeah.
And I'm thinking that if you have recommendations as ad hoc.
Our recommendation is basically we need to fix the building.
Okay.
I'm not a contractor, so I don't know what the priority is. I know there are some foundational problems the back. I don't know if it makes sense to look into that before we start fixing floors and things.
Correct, so here's foundation, like you're saying, over here in the main hall, we got a slope, so that's going to be a big chunk. The center is rise. Then settle on the sides. I know that previously it's been worked on before. This year, I'm actually going to be talking to Rick in regards to replacing the deck and also looking into the sub foundation on this. So I've already put the motions.
Yeah.
It's just getting everybody lined up and trying to figure out each how soon and yeah, I mean, I've been talking like the roof guys, I've talked to three different about redoing this section of the building because it does leak into the kitchen and also inside the storage room there. So those are our issues that we currently have. So that's something that I've already got a couple quotes on that too. So I'm compiling everything. That's why I mean, when we have that meeting with Matt, well, we're gonna have some ducks in a row about them.
Great.
So.
And then the other thing that is of, I think, yet most important, and I would, I would hope that you all have read Matthew's letter to the community about the fact that now the application for the W R F has been completed. What's what's the word? In other words.
Accepted.
Accepted. So it's there are no other information holes. Um, so now it's going to go to a consideration.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So, but I hope you all read his letter and
What exactly does that mean, consideration? So it has not been approved?
Oh, no.
It has to go through.
My understanding, yes, it has to go to the Planning Commission, I believe, and I'm sure it's in his letter.
Um, what is, let me see. He has the steps.
And then the coastal.
It has to go to the environmental determination.
Yeah.
So it has to go through a C Q A. Because I, from what he explained to me, when we got the temporary permit, it didn't go through the C Q A process, so it has to go through the C Q A process. Um, so the county, I think it's the point, yeah, in review, the Planning Commission needs to see it and the Board of Supervisors will approve it. It goes through the C Q A process and then I, from what he explained to me, this is where the Coastal Commission will also come in and have their review and stuff. So it it's not final, it was not approved, but this was the first step in the portal, which was a big one that they've worked really hard.
But any of those agencies could come back and say we need to do more.
We need more, they need, I mean, more information as well as mitigation efforts, like we know, which was in the application.
Yeah.
There's mitigation efforts we have to do because of where it's located and the environmental
Yep.
thing. So but we knew that and that's in the application about what we're planning. So I think this is also the final negotiations of what exactly what that's going to work out.
But it is a huge.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So we kind of had the ad hoc committee report. Did you want to say anything more?
I do.
Oh.
Well, I don't know if it's new business or whether it has to do with the ad hoc, but but I've I've just been thinking about something that involves like the ad hoc for this thing, thinking about whether we ought to take that task on at this committee because we're not doing a lot else.
No, rather than ad hoc, just like them.
Um, but shall I go ahead and talk about what I wanted to talk about?
Committee member communication.
Okay, so I guess I've been thinking a lot about whether, and I don't know what the politics of the board are, but whether our core businesses are fire protection, sewer and water.
Right.
And a lot of our energy and money is is going to things like the Vets Hall, the Fiscalini Ranch and the skate park.
Yeah.
And I've been wondering whether we ought to try to get out of those businesses. I mean, and whether that's ever been, and this is no criticism of our staff. I think the staff is wonderful, but you know, they just can't do all of this stuff and that the the energy and the money and the 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 long term commitments there, I mean, just like the Fiscalini Ranch, I mean, you and I have discussed it before I was ever on this committee, but I, you know, as my understanding, the original plan was the 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 Fiscalini Ranch Preserve was the one that was supposed to buy the ranch. It just didn't happen. I think, you know, I was thinking maybe I just give it to them or sell it to them or something.
Just to update.
Well, you know, I mean, because it, the amount of energy it takes away from these things, like getting this of the the treatment plant up and running.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, I guess, and and it's so, and you know, I was thinking about the skate park and 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 what the insurance cost and whether that's going to have to be staffed so that, I mean, I know it's, you know, it's been a big project to get it built and I think it should be built. And I think it'll be an asset for the community, but whether we ought to get in the long term business of running that when our, it's not our core business, our core community responsibility. I just have doubts about that. And so, you know.
But don't we own the land?
Yeah.
Fiscalini Ranch, yeah.
And the skate park location.
Yeah.
So
And we're all news.
Are you recommending that we deed it over to?
Well, we also, I mean, I and I, I'm just gonna say that a museum, we own the land there.
Yeah.
We don't have any hand in running it. So I believe there's a model of us owning the land, but someone using it. Um, and just like the Legion Hall, I mean, they pay us a nominal rent. We don't have any participation in running the Legion.
Interesting.
So I think there's a model of us maybe not deeding over the land, but letting them use it for their purposes, but not taking ownership of running it, which I think is what you're kind of talking about, the long term ramifications of like actually maintaining and running. Um, I mean, that's just a general, I know it's a complicated issue and we we've had the Fiscalini Ranch for a long time, so. But your ad hoc committee is looking at that too, right? The the agreement between us and the
Yeah, the fifth, the the Fiscalini Ranch plan um, was written in two thousand and three. It's extremely outdated, so I'll, I'll, I'll let you know about the fact that we do have an ad hoc. Um, Karen Dean and I are on the ad hoc. We meet with leadership at F F R P on a regular basis. Um, it's funny because they are, they they wonder why it takes so long and I keep telling them it's governmental and that's why the government always takes a whole lot longer. Um, but part of what that ad hoc committee is recommending, and we haven't made a formal recommendation to the board yet, is that that agreement, that plan gets rewritten, basically in the form of an amendment. Because if we're not doing what it says we're supposed to be doing and it's impossible to do what it says we're supposed to be doing. And I think that what we, how we do that is really up for big time discussion. You know, I mean, I mean, part of our dilemma is that we have only so many resources and David doesn't have any, the only incoming that his department has is the the plugins for your car.
Yeah, and the Vets Hall, which is small.
Yeah.
It's nominal. It does not cost.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, it begs a bigger question. I think what what you brought up and what you're working on with the ad hoc committee and um, when these agreements were put in place so long ago and when we got the Fiscalini Ranch and when the C C S D took over the Vets Hall, I don't even know the history around that.
Yeah.
I mean, one thing you have to look at is this community is very small.
Yeah.
Probably part of what attracted all the residents here is that it's small and it's clean, but but when you have a small population, you know, like economies of scale, you you have very limited ways to raise resources and inevitably taking doing the core functions while the water, the wastewater and and the fire protection, it costs more and more money. And when you have a smaller resources to raise money, you know, with a smaller population, you do come to this breaking point of like what we we can't keep up.
Yeah.
And so it's, you know, I don't, I think in the community, it's kind of been a discussion of like, you know, do we care about this? Do we not care? And I think that we care about everything, but the facts are, we it is very limited and I do believe the community and the board is gonna have, and maybe it's starting now with this conversation around the Fiscalini Ranch is, you know, a real hard look at what we can do because we do have deferred maintenance in these core functions that we need to do that we can't keep up with.
Right.
Um, monetarily and if we keep, you know, we borrow to get the big projects done, but again, we still have very limited ways to rate, to raise funds.
And as we've got a capital improvement that's related to our core functions, that's as long as my arm.
Yes.
You know, so and it's not getting, it's getting longer, not shorter.
Right.
Um, I mean, like I say, I think the skate park is great and I think the energy the community's put into it is great, but you know, it's gonna end up being another money bin.
Well, the skate park, um, we did pledge a hundred and seventy eight thousand dollars. And the insurance that the C C S D has will cover the skate park because it's our land already. So we don't have to do extra insurance. I asked that question to Matthew, said we don't have to do extra insurance. I don't know that that's true, but we'll see.
Well, I mean, loss is one thing, but liability is where I think the
Yeah.
huge risk is.
And we have that, but anyway, that, but I asked the question and the answer was it won't cost us anymore in insurance. So but there is, for instance, I mean, maintenance, right? Well, the skate park people have a maintenance fund that they're gonna be using toward that. Now, what does that mean? I mean, there's just so many questions about that. So that's one thing. Vets Hall is Vets Hall and we have to fix it so it doesn't fall down, but the Fiscalini Ranch, we have that ad hoc. And there's gonna need to be changes and and as it stands right now, there's a lot of resistance, not only on F F R P's side, but also our side. Because they feel like we took money away from them and we didn't. What we did was we hired a new person. Um, and which was more than the money that they were being given for contract work. So, um, yeah, that I I think what you're saying is a really good piece of information um, that we need to look at when we do strategic.
And I think one thing to remember with that money that, you know, we we took away, we hired a new person and there's conversation around whether that's really been effective or whether that covers the sixty thousand we took away. And I think what you're bringing up is the bigger conversation that we need to focus on is this long term sustainability and as well as the fact that in the ranch maintenance plan, if they had that extra, oh, the sixty thousand we funded again, would we take that other maintenance person away?
Yeah.
What, whatever, even if we kept the maintenance person at hand had the sixty thousand, we still would not be able to fund what that ranch management plan says that we should should be doing.
Yeah.
So I I think getting out of that conversation would be really beneficial and moving forward to what what is the real issue here?
Well, and what was set up in two thousand and three was that eventually F F R P, if they had the resources, could take over running the ranch.
So I don't, just to clarify, we gave them this year for this fiscal year, thirty seven thousand dollars plus half of them.
You mean the F F R P?
Yes.
No, uh, sixteen thousand.
Sixteen thousand.
Right.
So basically, we're talking about if we decided F F R P, you're gonna be responsible, we're talking about sixteen thousand dollars, correct?
No.
Okay.
No, the sixteen thousand dollars is for contract work over there. We have four staff on F N R who, if you ask David, who says the majority of their time is spent on the ranch?
Okay, so if we were to divest, divest, we could maybe eliminate one position or two positions.
Sure.
In, okay, so I guess my question is, we all know how strongly the community feels about Fiscalini.
Yeah.
Is it worth it to say you're on your own?
Well, the 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 bottom line is that right now through Laughco, we have responsibility for Parks and Recreation. We also have responsibility, which is the Vets Hall too, which is the skate park too, which is the East Ranch.
Yeah.
Whatever.
The dog park. Well, it's a skate park because we created the skate park. It doesn't say in there that you will have a skate
Right.
or you will have a dog park, but we created those. So yes, it is our responsibility.
Yeah, so it's the board's making, the board's head, board has made those decisions. It's kind of like the W R F. Um, the board made that decision.
So it is now ours.
So it is now ours. So when we make decisions now, we think about tho- those kind of things are like huge, especially because I'm thinking that in the past, there was maybe some consideration that that we would be opening the water list and that would bring in money too. You know, I mean, who knows? But anyway, this, these are good conversations and I'm putting them under Committee Member Communications and Ad Hoc Reports. And because of that, we need to ask, is there anything more that the committee wants?
Steve, so if we, if C C S D relinquished the Vets Hall, who would take it over?
Well, I think that I, what 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 got me thinking about this was how frustrating it must have been for the two of you after all you, the thinking you'd done about the the Vets Hall here to be kind of say, well, you can't do this.
Yeah.
You can't do that. And
Yeah.
So I'm thinking somebody needs to look at this thing and like, you know, should we be hiring a property manager and and should we, if we're gonna keep this thing, I, you know, I'm contracted, look, but it's been here since nineteen fifty five. It doesn't look like a lot of work been done. You know, could somebody more skilled than uh, C C S D come in here and make a moneymaker out of this for the community rather than, rather than a drag on our core business, C C S D's core business?
Yeah.
And you know what? As I, again, back to the ranch, I love the ranch. I mean, I, you know, if there was no other alternative, I would say, yes, we absolutely have to keep it. But the idea was that C C S D was only supposed to be a placeholder and the the community and the and the Fiscalini Ranch folks were supposed to raise the money and that, you know, they were supposed to make this happen. So we kind of ended up where we are today by default, as I understand it. And, you know, I mean, the um, I I obviously, I think we need to take a hard look at this place, you know, and I, and I mean, to really do this right, I mean, what are we I, I, we're talking about a couple million dollars at least. I think, you know, I'm in the, kind of in the construction business. And, you know, it's a big project, but it's it's potentially a big asset. It's it's like, it's it's biggest shortcoming is the absence of of parking, you know? But, you know, maybe there's a solution to that too, but uh, and it, you know, this, I don't know how long everybody's been here. My wife and I have been here since about two thousand and nine. It seemed like it used to be used a lot more than it is now.
I don't know.
Art and Wine Festival.
Well, that's still happening.
Yeah, I know.
That's only once a year.
Well, I mean, it just, I'm just saying, just in general, it seems like there used to be more thing events here. I don't know.
Yeah.
Was that for Jocelyn Center?
The Jocelyn Center dates back to the, to the early fifteen nineteen fifties too.
But also maybe things fell off during the pandemic that haven't come back.
Yeah.
That could be.
That's possible.
But I mean, you know, should we be giving this to the Jocelyn Center? Could they do a better job? They're right down the street. You know, they're kind of in the in the business.
Does the county own the Jocelyn Center?
No, it's a, it's a standalone. It's a five oh one C four organization. It's not a non, it's a nonprofit, but it's not a charity. Uh, it's like a civic organization.
And I didn't look at the Jocelyn Center just to see, because it does come up and they they utilize that space a lot differently than we do.
Mm hmm.
I saw like a lot of community classes and that.
Clubs and lots.
But that space out, or this space could be used for a lot of other things.
But yeah, we don't have the capacity to manage something like that. Um, you know, we have our
Core business.
Well, yes, and we have our, our, you know, utility billing, expert finance, you know, my, my kind of finance, we does payroll and this and that. She manages the Vets Hall rent. So, you know, we are spread and that's another thing, number two, is we're very, very small team and our staff is required to do a lot of things.
Lot of different things.
A lot of different things. And so, again, going back to my conversation about the size of our organization, there's limitations all around, you know, um, that we have to be mindful of. So we can't hire someone, no, if we were gonna run this like the Jocelyn Center, we would have to have a full time F T E just to run this, which we would have to.
Right, right, exactly right. I know you one, one more thing, I could do with on my list too, I just forgot about it, was this pond down there that's that's been deconditioned. I think that's a huge asset for our water problem. And, you know, that was another thing I thought maybe we could look at, how that could be utilized to, you know, rectify some of this water shortage, you know, by repurposing it as a storage facility. Uh, anyway.
Yeah, lots of great ideas.
Well, I was just kind of thinking, trying to think of something for us to do because I I appreciated the frustration these guys came on last week after the time they last meeting after all the time.
Yeah, I felt really bad about. Okay, so since we don't have any agenda, I'd just talk about those things. I'd like to know, is there any, anybody online that, a public? No? All right, thank you. So let's go to public comment. Do we have any public comment online? We did have one person. Uh, you, and his comment, it it doesn't, it's not specific to us. Um, but it was about his water pressure.
Hmm.
Oh, yeah, so it is attached to our committee, but it basically got referred, Haley referred it to the water people.
It's too low, it's too high?
Too low.
Too low.
Yeah, and I don't know, I think there was somebody else that was complaining about that and was actually their own water pressure going into their house that needed to come. Okay. No other public comment. Okay. So consent agenda. Is, are there any changes that you want to make to the minutes? For the beautiful.
It's so well done. Fascinating. Nice job.
No, yes.
I don't have it.
Is there a public comment on the minutes on the consent agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? And all those in favor?
All right.
Okay, opposed, right? So now Denise.
Yeah.
Are on. Okay, for the discussion and consideration of the fiscal year twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six, first quarter budget report and staff recommendation. Basically, what you're gonna do is you're gonna take a look at this with Denise and we will make any recommendations. To the board, it'll be on the board's agenda at the next.
Yes, well, for um, they usually just. Just moving by.
I think.
Yeah. Um, so, but I can include any of your comments or concerns in the staff report. Um, so that's basically what we're doing here today. Um, and so. This is agenda item for a discussion in consideration of so of the fiscal year twenty five, twenty six, first quarter budget. So this is the first reporting that we have um on how we're doing on the budget this year. Uh, most of you have been through this process before, you have not, so. I'll kind of walk through it, but I have here listed out the two budget adjustments that we've made this year. Um. So far, the board has approved two point three million for the Stewart Street tank renovation.
Hmm.
Um, and then the one million for the fire engine are what were approved, budget adjustments approved, and they are reflected here in this report. One thing I'd like to point out, just for those of you who aren't familiar. Um, the fire engine is coming out of reserve, so it's going to, you know, push the budget in a big negative for. For the fire department and that's, you know, intentional. The Stewart Street Tank Renovation. I, the board has not, they've identified that we need these additional funds to complete the project. And I can point it out when we get there, but um we, I think we're gonna still have a conversation on funding source.
No.
I I, so, so just to point out, like, we have put, this board can approve these projects and that, yes, we need this additional money. But that doesn't, that conversation initially doesn't always have the final like funding source. How are we gonna do this? So I just want to point that out. Um, we may decide just to use reserves for the Stewart Stewart Street. Street Tank Renovation, but there's a lot of other things to consider because we have a lot of other projects that need attention. Okay. So, um.
So I'm sorry, Denise, uh, we're we're on budget or there's an overrun on the Stewart Street tanks because of whatever?
Well, the Stewart Street Tank Project, I mean, that was begun before I even got here, so let me tie in. So that project was, we need to do it, we're gonna do it. It gets approved. It got approved at a budget and and I I can't give you a number, I'd have to go back, but a smaller number. Which was basically just initial cost of like engineering design and stuff like that. So some of these bigger projects come forward like that and then. As we get closer to completion, it's like, or or actually going, you know, it it went out for RP and then we get an actual dollar value of what it's gonna cost. And so this is reflective of that. So are we overrun? Not really. We never really had a good number until now.
I see.
Um, so that some of these bigger bigger projects work like that because they take time.
Hmm.
Um.
So I may be getting ahead of myself. When I look at um Fund Zero One General Fund and it says we're at a negative of almost a million dollars, is that?
That is accurate. So, no, that's not what I'm talking about. Um, if you look at the column that says current total budget.
Ooh.
And it says negative nine hundred seventy thousand, that's reflective of. The budget being added for the fire engine and that we are planning on spending approximately that much out of reserves. To cover the fire engine purchase. Um, the fiscal activity is our actual activity that is has happened and what you're gonna see across the board in every department is that. Our expenses are higher than our revenues right now. We have uh our cash flow at the beginning of the year is is.
It's it's a timing distortion.
Yes, it's a timing distortion, so.
Quarter, it'll be my property taxes.
We don't get that. Yeah, we don't get them until.
We had planners.
I think we just received our first, like, big in in quarter two, our larger property tax, and it was only a couple hundred thousand. I mean, it's not even substantial, so. That is common. I am, um, I didn't get a chance to do it before this, but I do really want to compare where we are. From last year, um, I'm moving a lot of money to to cover, you know, the cash flow, um, which I haven't had to do in years past, but I think that's because we're being smarter about our investing and so we're investing more. So I I'm having to move money over, but it is common this this happens. So you're gonna see that across the board.
Before we go, can I ask, on the fire truck, the fire trucks take or fire engines take like four years to build or something, something insane like that?
Yeah, three.
When, yeah, so as far as us watching the money coming, coming out to pay for that, does it come out incrementally?
No.
It all comes out when they deliver it?
No.
No.
You pay it upfront.
We chose, the board chose. To make an upfront payment because there was quite a discount if we did.
Okay, good.
Um.
Like a cup, like close to two hundred thousand dollars.
But we could have paid incrementally, we could have financed it and we presented those options to the board and they chose to pay. Um, an upfront, uh, we have not made that payment yet. I have to, you know, Chief Burke is working on design of it and then working on all those details.
Okay, well, sounds like a good plan.
If you wanna. Yeah, well, it wasn't unanimous. And there was, I mean, there was one motion that failed.
Oh.
It was like, I think we should finance this and we voted against, well, some of us voted against it, but um. You know, it's, it it's one of those things, I think, that. If you, if you finance something, it's kind of like your credit card. If you, if you don't pay the whole month. You go, oh, goody, I'm gonna use my credit card more and then interest gets added on and all that kind of stuff. So in in my life. And you, you have to take what you do in your life to to kind of make decisions for the board. Um, I pay cash, you know, if I'm gonna buy a car, I pay cash. Um, and so does Karen. So we, we, it it was quite a discussion.
Hmm.
But we did save close to two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
By paying upfront.
And they will not come back to us and say, oh.
They can.
Yeah.
Good.
Okay. Sorry for any.
That's okay. Oh, that's good. Thank you.
Um, do you want me to go over the columns of each of these, the title columns of the budget report? Okay, so I'm gonna do this once, it's on every page. So if you're on page eight, this is the summary page of the general fund. But we have the original total budget, so I think that is the operating budget for the year. Um, what we're expecting are for our revenue and our and our expenses. This is the preliminary budget and you can see the bottom line there is that the general fund is supposed. Were um in the positive two hundred and sixty nine thousand for the year. That was the plan, the surplus. Our current total budget, as you can see, the revenue has stayed the same, the expenditures have increased, that is including any capital projects. That that were approved as well as carryforwards of projects from prior years as, you know, and the fire engine was included in there, so any budget adjustments that we make. So you can see there, now we're saying, you know, we're gonna be in whole nine hundred and seventy thousand, that is due, I call it a planned reserve expenditure. It's terminology I use. Um. This is just the way that we account for things. It's not my favorite, but we do it. Um, period activity will include, that is, this this report was pulled in September. So that's September's activity. So we have revenue of a hundred and sixteen and expenses of sixty five.
Um, is that September or is that for the quarter?
September, period activity is just the month.
Okay.
That I pulled the report. Fiscal activity is the whole quarter.
Okay.
So that's July, August and September, and as you can see, we're in a deficit of about one point three million.
Uh, we're exploiting that.
Yeah.
I kept growing.
Um, the variance is just the budget versus the actuals. It kind of doesn't mean anything at this point as well as percent remaining. It doesn't really mean much. Until, you know, fourth quarter, I'll start paying more attention to it because. We're just in a, we're in a weird state when it's the beginning here. So does anyone have any questions about how the reports are laid out?
I guess.
Okay, so then I'm gonna move down to page eleven, which is the fire department. Um, so you can see there, they have property taxes of eighty one thousand so far this year. Um. And you can see then the expense categories, we go into salaries, benefits. Um, then supplies and services. And so if you're looking at the fiscal activity column, that's just what we have spent so far this year. Um. You can see on under category sixty, this is page thirteen, capital outlay, you can see there the fire engine budget adjustment reflected there. Um.
Can we go back to page eleven for a second?
Sure.
It's so on the, with the period activity, with February forty five. The the those two numbers that are there, the sixty five thousand and change, one's positive, negative, so they net zero.
Hmm.
But they're not reflected in the fiscal activity for the for the quarter. Is that normal that it wouldn't be there at all?
Yeah, probably because it's zero in both accounts.
Okay.
So if if you're seeing it in the period activity, because that's the period that I made the actual journal entry to move. Um, because the revenue got taken into a different account and so I I move it.
So when the zero out, it doesn't get reflected in the quarterly, okay?
Yeah.
That was the question, thank you.
And that is the safer grant from last year, so I accrue that at the end of the year because we don't get the actual payment until July. But it belongs to prior year, so. Usually it's a seamless thing that you shouldn't really see, but it it shouldn't net out to zero.
So the safer grant, that was something that I probably should have talked about in my report. Um. We did get the safer grant, we got awarded the safer grant for, and the safer grant is for three um firefighters.
Oh, right.
Yeah, and the problem was this year, last year, or the last time we got it, we got it for three and it was a hundred percent. This year, it's seventy five percent that they pay seventy five percent and the third year, they only pay thirty five percent. So um it's gonna cost us um more money, but we still have that third person on the fire. Engine, which it was uh, um, which was really underscored the need for that by Chief Burke at that board.
So before we leave that topic, what do we do the following year when you don't have the safe, we don't have the safer grant any longer?
They they go back down to three.
Yeah.
They would let them go.
Yeah, we did. They, we we had to leave, we let them go in June.
Okay.
So I mean, I don't even believe we've gotten the safer grant yet. This was approval to apply for it and submit it.
No.
No, because they, okay, yeah, so we accepted it, so um we haven't even hired them yet, right? So. We've been functioning in July through October.
With three.
With, yeah, three, 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 so this will give us four.
Yeah.
Um, going back to what we had when we held the safer grant before. Um, so none of that is reflected in here because that was a second quarter board decision, so that will be in the second quarter report reflecting. That we're gonna be paying a little bit more money for some additional safer firefighters.
Okay. I got the confusion. I'm hearing a safer grant, a new safer grant. For three additional firefighters, but then I heard you say that that it gets us the fourth.
I I.
On on the engine.
On the engine. So right now we have a captain, an engineer and a firefighter, and so with the safer grant, we get another firefighter, so it's four people on the engine.
Okay.
Which is a preferred staffing model.
So the sa- it, so the safer grant, the new safer grant is for.
Three firefighters.
Three, three additional.
Yeah, but we just three shifts, so it's A shift, B. So one additional firefighter per shift, which gives us four on the engine.
Thanks, but not at a hundred percent.
Correct.
No, seventy five.
Yeah.
We'll be paying twenty five percent for the first two years and then was like seventy percent the third year and um, yeah.
And then we apply.
Again.
Again.
And then, and and since last time we got a hundred percent, this time we only got seventy five, seventy five, thirty five. Um, I think what is is it the state that we got it from?
It's a federal grant.
Federal, federal grant, they're saying. Come on, you gotta do better because that's what they do is they give you a grant so that you can figure out how to pay for it yourself in the next. Next three years, but yeah, so we may not ever get it again.
Okay.
Okay.
Um. So.
We were on page thirteen.
Yeah, thirteen, um. You can see the bottom line, I again, doesn't really make much sense right now, so I um. And the last category is allocated overhead, so we allocate overhead from admin to every department, so that's what that is. So do you have any questions about fires?
So it looks like we only have a little over eighteen percent left of our fund.
No.
No, is that?
Should I not? I wouldn't, I just went really, percent remaining is not accurate at this time.
Uh huh.
Because it's so, everything's so out of whack.
Yeah, and we haven't gotten.
Yeah.
Property taxes.
So property, that's the level to.
Yeah.
Hey.
Hey, so then Solids and Resources starts on page seventeen.
There he is.
The same thing, I mean, they have a revenue of around thirty nine thousand so far this year. Um. And as you can see, I mean, we're expecting property taxes of eight hundred and seventy, so it's just, I mean, we don't just don't get property taxes until well into the year.
Yeah.
Um. And then salaries and wages, um, category fifty two starts at the end of seventeen and goes down to. The next page, um, so that's all of their. Plies and such, then you can see in their capital outlay front category is that refinishing the floors, the seventeen thousand we had allocated in twenty seven. Roof repairs, um, there on page nineteen is their allocation of the overhead for the first quarter. And currently they're in a deficit of a hundred ninety three thousand. We have a planned deficit of fifty six thousand for, um. Facilities and resources.
So, so yeah, so what I want to underscore is, for instance, the. What David has, what what Mr. Gary has. Is he has all these unfunded things like, I mean, how much did you have we paid for toilet paper?
Hmm.
You know.
We're already twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand for toilet paper and it's for the public bathrooms. So it's really tough.
You better recycle them.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Well, in Europe, they charge for toilet paper.
That's true.
And they have some.
Yeah, yeah, you have to pay, yeah.
So I do have, it should be, yes, go on.
Yes.
On page eighteen, the next to the last line in the big block of numbers has to do with fuel.
Yeah.
And it's a credit.
That, okay, so the way we do fuel is it all gets charged to Physiologist and Resources and then our water departments go and use it.
Okay.
And so at at every quarter end, I allocate out the portion to water and wastewater of them using.
Okay.
Um, you can see overall. You know, they've sent four thousand three, four thousand dollars for FNR, so that's would represent FNR's usage.
Okay.
Um, but yes. The part of my quarter end process is.
Maybe we get it something back from the state.
Yeah.
Um, so then, okay, so page twenty two is so is the capital fund for Solids and Resources, so this is where all expenditures will be for the skate park. And uh like the the ranch restroom, which is not done, but like last year would have seen that. So any capital. Sort of, which I, this is how I would prefer to see capital expenditures, because I'd like to see outside of the operations fund, every other fund. It's combined. This one is separate. Um. So that's what this is and um there's a big credit in the grants because again, I I accrued. The grant reimbursement for the east rent, east west, the the restroom, sorry, the restroom over there at the ranch. Um, so I accrued that, we've, we have not received it to gate, but I have had a conversation with the auditors. And he said it is appropriate to record it in the fiscal year that we have the expenditures, which was last year. So it is a credit, you will see money coming in, that will then make that zero. Um. So because that revenue was was um. So because that revenue was was um, was documented last year. So that is a little hunky.
A little confused. Misland is revenue, this activity five thousand dollars. But then we show remaining. So we started with a zero current budget, which I know is gonna be augmented. But we spent five thousand dollars. That's revenue.
Isn't it already on the top?
And then skate park. I'm just confused at how we're at a negative.
Which which.
Fiscal activity, one seventy-seven, two forty-three, two forty-four, thirty-three.
Okay, okay, well, the grant that I just explained, I'm accruing that from last year, so that looks like a negative. No, I mean, we haven't received the money yet, but I had to record it in last fiscal year. So the money is recorded last fiscal year, so I accrue it, which means then it comes out this fiscal year, because we're actually gonna receive it. We just haven't received it yet, but I did check with the auditors, so next, hopefully, next. Uh, they're slow in reimbursing us or giving us that money, the granting agency. And so hopefully, second quarter, that would be a zero, so then you would be a five thousand dollar revenue.
Got it, thank you.
Did you wanna say something?
You inspired. I do see though that, and we should, I should have budgeted in there that huh, that like um, what um. Mrs. Scott had said previously, if the district had funded a hundred and seventy-eight thousand. For the skate park, that should be in the budget, so I'll make that change before I bring this to the board. We have about ninety-some thousand left of that hundred and seventy-eight, so I'll record that. That was an oversub.
Well, that's why we're here, yes, we just wanted to help.
So you will, there is a budget in revenue for, you know, ninety thousand plus a little bit for what's left from. Cambridge Community Council for the skate park.
You made the comment that facilities and resources separately accounts for the capital projects, and you'd like to see that done in all departments. Do you have that discretion with Matthews okay, or does that have to be approved by the board?
I don't know. I have to ask. It would be kind of a big task, so I think I haven't like tackled it yet. Just to change that that model, um, you know, WRF is set up that way too, they have their own capital fund. Um, so I would need to talk to Matt, and you probably need to talk, um, ask our legal counsel. Is that a decision that the board would have to make? I'm not sure.
I'm not sure either.
I might have that discretion.
It it's kind of operations.
Yeah, it could be, and if it's that, then I could separate it.
Just a question.
Yeah, and some people will get confused by it, I think that there's a preference, some people don't like it.
All one way or all the other.
Then you have a really clear, uh, you can visually look and say, this is operations. And this is capital, whereas now it looks like. We're in the deficit, and it's like you have to explain, oh no, this is a planned. And actually, when I interviewed here, I asked that question, because when you look at their financials, it was like. Well, you guys, what do you do when you're in a deficit like this? And I'm like, oh, we weren't in a deficit, but that's the way it looks, right? If you don't separate them, that's how it looks to the someone who's just reviewing your financials.
So going forward, is that what you're doing? When you have another, when you have another capital project, are you doing it separate?
No, not in water, not in wastewater, and not in um, general fund, just, well, just in facilities and resources and WRF. So if I change that, I would have to, I'll I'll talk to Matt about it. And if I'm allowed to just do it.
Sounds like a mixed.
Most people I talk to about it in finance, maybe and stuff, understand it. Um, okay, so then on page twenty-six, we start to admin. So. This one, property taxes, category forty-four, any property tax gets brought in here, and then a part of my quarter. Quarter quarter end process is I allocate the property tax out where it should be. Uh, which is not in admin, right, it goes to fire and F and R, so that's why that fiscal activity there is zero, and you see some credits. In there.
Online on the first for category forty-two under fees, the franchise fees, what are franchise?
That is what we get from waste connections, we get a portion of the fees from them.
That is controversial.
Also.
How is it controversial? Uh, because there are those in the community that feel that that's why we keep going with. The weights company that we have right now, because they give us franchise fees, kickback.
This is the trash company.
Yes, and um, but the truth is that um. They've they have, they've done that for us for a very long time, and it doesn't happen anymore, really. So when you would go with a new company, we would lose that. That doesn't mean that that's why we don't go with a new company, because we've done the research on that. And it would be more expensive to go with a new company anyway.
We looked at that too prior to you coming on the finance committee, and we had the same discovery. It was better to stay home.
It's better to say, they do an excellent job.
Those guys are awesome.
They really are.
Um, and I think there's something going through the court system now.
Yeah, to get rid of the.
Franchise, but like for everyone, not just us. So that's to be decided, um. Salaries and wages, uh, our supplies and services, um. Budget and where we've spent this year, uh, you can see the Vets Hall Sound System is in there for the fifty thousand. Um, allocation of the overhead. Is in there. Any questions? I'm in departments, then we go to the enterprise funds, and on page thirty-two, you'll see the summary. It's like goes down the line, like I said, everyone is in a deficit, which is common for this type of year, the the revenue has. Not keeping up with the expenditures at this point in time. Um, and so page thirty-five is the water department.
Are you so confused? Waste water fund is at a negative of seven point nine million dollars.
That's the budget, yes. And again, that's representative of the capital projects that have been budgeted, so they're. Planned, either planned reserve expenditures, or a part of that is the um, bond funds. Which I don't. Again, maybe, maybe I'll have to go look and see what I did last year, because we have about eight million now sitting out in bond funds. That, I'll have to see if I budgeted the revenue for that, but we only bring that in as we spend. But I probably should have budgeted for that too, so that's maybe a a change I could make.
Huge number.
Yeah, but again, we're spending, that's that's represented the the um, SST projects in.
You know what that is, SST. SST is all of the stuff that's going on, what does SST stand for?
Something sustainable turnkey.
Projects, um, at the wastewater plant, there's all kinds of work being done over there. And.
We got a twelve point one million dollar bond.
So that's what's paying for that.
I'll look and see, uh, because I did not budget the bond money for revenue in there.
I think it would be really helpful to have that in there, so people don't think that.
Yeah, and like for the the water, the water is so large that. And and that is the partly, this is the two point three million dollars we we budgeted for Stewart Street Tank. I don't have a revenue source to budget in there yet. So that one is gonna stay it is as it is, the wastewater projects do have a revenue source, so I could budget that in there. And I'll I'll make that change before I bring it to board.
Thank you, Finance Committee. So where would that be? Where would that in Fund Twelve?
In Fund Twelve, the revenue had increased by, I think we have about eight point seven left. So then that would bring us out of a deficit.
Then we're just, we're still at a four million dollar deficit bottom line.
Hmm, no, we'd actually be making money bottom line if I added eight point seven million in there.
But when I look at the bottom. Surplus.
Oh, are you talking about the total at the bottom? Yeah, for all utilities, yes, and again, that's representative of the two point three million from for the Stewart Street Tanks, which I'm anticipating will. Try and get some funding for.
And where's the other one point seven? Well, okay, so say we had to take, we subtract the eight million dollars that we have in bond, that leaves us with four million dollars. Two point three is the Stewart Tank, where's the one point seven?
Well, I probably, I mean, I'd have to go look through here, but probably other projects, I mean, we have a lot of CIP projects that have been budgeted.
That all are part of the water fund?
Correct, utility.
And if you talk with Mr. Green about this, um, things have just been left. Undone for so long. And um, he's doing them right now, I'm doing them correctly.
And this is not uncommon, no, it's very hard for, I mean, I have the same issue like Cal Poly, like to try and keep up with deferred maintenance is almost an impossible task. Um, and yes, there's probably some hesitation to spend, or people just don't look. Far enough in the future to say, let's save for this, or let's, this is what we're gonna have to do, but. So it's not an uncommon thing to really be looking at a deferred maintenance list that exceeds. Your your sources, it's just, uh, you know. I haven't worked anywhere that doesn't have that issue that you really have to take into account, and like I said, with inflation, the costs just go up and up and up. Um, but we are trying to tackle a lot of them, and I'll point them out in here, so thirty-five is the water, the page thirty-five starts the water fund. You can see the revenue that they've collected so far this year. Um, there is uh, three hundred and seventy-five thousand at the bottom of page thirty-five. Budgeted for grant funding for Stewart Street Tank, so that is a funding source for the Stewart Street Tank. Um, then we have our salaries and wages, and then we go down to. Uh, category fifty-two, all the supplies and services so far this year.
Just to ask a question about that that grant for Stewart Street. Who is that a grant from? Who provides us that additional funding, you know?
And it's been around for a while. It, I mean, it several years ago, I think it was when we got it.
Helps community, well, I'm just curious, what's the source of the money?
An EPA grant, but let me double check. Stewart, yeah, it's an EPA community grant.
Yes.
Great, thank you. So if this government shutdown continues, does uh, some of these receipts gonna? At least temporarily dry out?
I have no idea. I mean, we just got awarded the safer grant, which is a federal grant, so do they have the ability to stop? The payment and say, oops, we're not doing it, I'm not sure, I'd have to look into each one of them.
Maybe the money's not there, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't have that answer. Okay, so if you go to page thirty-nine, this is where you'll see. The capital outlay, so I'm gonna go into this in a little more detail, so originally, if you look under the original budget. There's five hundred and five thousand dollars, which was budgeted for new capital projects. Those are representative in those one, two, three, four projects that are there. The LS pressure reducing bolts, the back trailers, generator for the Stewart string, street tank and uh, or for Stewart Street. And the SR four road, um, all of those other under budget adjustments are carry forwards. From projects from last year that were not complete, that are. Going to be complete plus. The two point three additional for Stewart Street Tank, that was a budget adjustment, so that. That is representative of why we're probably, you know, in a deficit, you can see under original. Budget, we had water at a zero, so that's meaning that the five hundred and five thousand dollars worth of capital projects that were approved. Are funded technically from the money that we're making this current year. Um, but it goes over to a deficit of three point four million because of all these additional projects, so. Your question of, okay, let's say we fund Stewart Street Tank with some other funding source for two point three million, we're still in a deficit, the one point four. Well, that's for all these other projects that are listed here. Um, but I can say another project that we have budgeted in here, the. Transition main, it's the second project design and permit SS W F Tran Main. Um, that's the big transmission line, that we have a temporary fix for it. That's also gonna be a really big project, like millions of dollars, well, we only have four hundred fifty-one thousand dollars left in budget. So we're, you're gonna see another request for funding for that project when it gets closer to.
So we gotta get a loan.
Yeah, we're gonna have to get a loan for some of this, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. We are gonna have to get a loan for some of those projects.
Okay, so question, you have Stewart Street Tank rehabilitation at six hundred and sixteen. And then you have Stewart Street Tank renovation at two point three, do we need to do both?
So the six hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and eighty is representative of money that was already approved. In prior years and is being carried forward. I have the two point three separate, because it was approved on a first quarter budget adjustment, so. Next year, you'll just see one line with it combined. I, there was no way for me to combine it.
But we need to do a rehabilitation.
No, it's the same project.
It got, it got. Oh, you, it got, um, what they were gonna do first was they were just gonna rehab it. And then it was like, no, this thing really needs to be taken care of, replaced. And I mean, we had to do new footings and, I mean. Yeah, and the decisions about what kind of tanks to do and all that. Um, it was Mr. Green came and said, what, we need to not just. Put a Band-Aid on it, we need to actually do the project.
So it it has, it is the same project, I mean, I I could make the. Descriptions the same, um, that was carried forward from before. And I can point it out to you in the CIP list, it's it that funding is all combined.
I will say it's confusing.
There's no way for me to, uh, there's no way for me to list it once, because that run of that two point three million was. Approved after the budget was completed, I can't combine line items when I've already posted that entry into the system. Um, no.
I think it'll be okay.
You can see it all as one, I mean, but yes, you have to make the connection, which I understand.
But I think when you, when you have unique things that are relatively spot. At least initially, it's good to have it broken out, so that you know that there was a couple of steps in getting to the completion. So if anybody is trying to figure it out, they can, they have to ask questions, like we are, but but. Will all sequentially make sense to them when it's all said and done, and I think this is the right way.
Yeah, I'll put it on the CIP list, so you can see how I represented on there. So page forty-three begins the WRF operations. Budget. Revenue, salaries and wages, and then their supplies and services so far this year. And um, their debt service payment on their loan that they have for this project. And that they're in a deficit, uh, a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. And yeah.
Do you know how much property tax you're gonna get before you get it?
Uh, and you mean each installment? Or in total?
Uh, in in each installment?
No, I don't. They.
So you don't know, they don't know who's gonna default?
Yeah, they send me monthly. They, I mean, I can know every month. So I guess I could, they have been sending me a reconciliation every month. But it just represents what they've given us. And so, yeah, no, I don't know. I can look historically and see when we started getting regular checks and assume it's gonna be around the same time. Um, any questions on the operations of WRF?
On forty five? Um, under the capital outlier, there's, there's a credit there, um, for the period of twenty four eight fifty. What would that represent? See it?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I think that's getting ready for the ZLD.
No, um, I'd have to look. Let me, I can run a report real quick and see what that's for. I'm assuming it's either an accrual or we got a credit back from somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I don't remember detail of it. Um.
It's a good thing though.
It is, I mean, to credit, so I can look into that and see what it is.
That was awful. Those are page forty nine two, under the WRF capital.
So. Page forty seven, this is the capital funds for, um. You know what? That with me, I moved, there was capital expenditures that were put in the operating fund and they belonged in capital. I moved them from Fund thirty nine to Fund forty.
Okay.
And all just came back to me. So, um, as you can see here, there's no like revenue budgeted in here. So everything you see here is an expense. So this fund is always looking like it's at a deficit. Um, unless I have a funding source specific to a project in here, which I do not, it's just coming out of operations. Um, and so you can see the new projects that were approved were two hundred and seventy thousand reflected in that original total budget, which make up those four projects, analytics overhaul, chemical building, container, shade, cover and sound enclosures. And then under the budget adjustments, those are projects that have been carried forward from prior years. So we have CDP permit expenditures, the trailer fill station, update chemical pumps, UV ballast and UV bulbs, um. For a total expected expenditure of around seven hundred and sixty thousand for the year in capital. Um. And on page fifty one begins the wastewater budget, and you can see the revenue, the wages, um. All the operating expenditures, there's supplies and services. And this is where I will go back in and I will budget um, revenue for the bond fund. Um, but starting on page fifty four, these are all the SST projects. Uh, well, this is all the capital projects. So under there, they had new requests of a hundred and seventy three thousand in the original total budget of, of, of two vehicles, replacing a generator and um, painting some hand reels. Um, and then you can see the projects we rolled forward um, under the budget adjustment amount. And then for here with the SST project, just for transparency and to keep them all um, accounted for all those ECMs, which are the SST projects were broken out into what are called ECMs. Um, and they each have their own budget account. So you see them really separate. You can see the expenditures really separate and what budget we have left for that specific project. And that's the twelve point one million dollar bond. CCM one, VCM three, four, five, seven listed there. Um, and where we are, um. All of those. So that's all the capitals.
And, and this is the wastewater thing that we're still trying to get approved, correct?
No.
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 No, that's the WRF.
Okay.
Wastewater is actually the wastewater plant over, um.
Okay.
Towards most.
Yeah.
Called the SS, I mean, commonly it's called the SST project. It's a, in conjunction with PG and E, and we have, this is what we got twelve point one million dollars of bond funding for are these, and they call them ECMs.
Listen, you know what this stands for?
Uh, Jim is on there. Can you let Jim? Yeah. Jim, do you know what ECM stands for?
Energy Conservation Modules.
Thanks, Jim.
You bet.
And just jump. About your projects.
That's why PG and E is involved.
Yes. PG and E is involved lots.
Yes. So is this? No, it's.
Is this a separate uh, bond that we got?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so we had two twelve million dollar.
No, we have one twelve million dollar bond, twelve point one million.
Okay.
And it was for the, these projects in wastewater, in wastewater.
So we've been paying those, that bond down?
Correct. Through the debt service, which you can see.
Right, but.
Down there.
Uh, how much? Have we actually spent on repairs thus far? Is that?
Well, okay, so I'll show you that. I'll show you that in the um, CIP list. You can see the total spent so far. So, or quickly, you could see, well, no, this isn't gonna show it here a separate, but I, in the CIP list, it separated out. I mean, if you added together all of this budget.
That's way too much math.
Yeah, then, then you could figure it, but I have it in the CIP list, so you can look at it there. We have about eight point four million left. So we've spent, I mean, twelve point one minus eight point four, we've spent that much.
How much?
Except.
In paying down the loan though?
Oh, uh, well, I actually have a presentation for that too. Present, huh?
Yes, yes.
So I'll show you, I'll be, I'll, I'll set out.
A lot of people want that information. And so that's why she's doing.
Yeah. Um, okay, so let me go, oh, do you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
So, um, it's been running for a little while now. So we should have some kind of track record as to whether the estimates that we had or what we objected the cost to be, to be what they actually are.
Me for the SST program?
And are we on track with, with meeting our commitment? And not overstating, not beating more money to do it?
Jim?
Um, yeah, excuse me. The only uh, change order we have is for the South Digestor Tank that will require more structural mitigation than the early metals can seventeen test performed, uh, indicated. So other than that, and I've made this clear to them, that, that this is the only and final change order that the district will accept. So that is our only increasing cost for this project.
Good job.
And we haven't brought that before the board yet. So. Um. It's, it's all, it's, it's happening as we speak.
The other thing that Mr. Green told us is that, um, more work has been done that we haven't paid for yet. That true?
Hmm, we took a brief um, respite from paying on invoices, basically from May through October. We had kind of preloaded our payments more than the construction piece had taken place. So we paused there for about five months and now we're back to where we've had more construction and more installation occur than where we're paid up to, if that makes sense.
Okay.
Does that sound clear?
Thank you. Yeah. And there's a lot of payments that I'm gonna be doing to PG and E that did not make it in the first quarter. For, and so I'm gonna be doing it this week. So next quarter, you'll see a lot of those balances coming down because they have performed, I mean, it's over a million dollars worth of work that I'll be paying on.
When you say there was a pause in payments, was there a pause in work?
No, we paused for payments to let that work portion catch up with the amount of money that we had expended out.
So we're moving forward with this project?
Yes.
Right. We just wanted to get a little bit more equity in the project for what we spent versus what work was performed.
That's good. I like the federal government.
Yeah.
Nothing gets done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did it short of a shutdown, though.
Okay, so if you go to page fifty nine, you're gonna see this is the beginning of our capital improvement list. This is a legend. It's kind of explaining what each column means, the ranking of them. Um, there's a B for budgeted, one means it's been requested, two is important, three is future needs. Um, it also has a timeline of when these projects, how they get approved uh, and funded and, and everything else. So that's your legend. Um, I'm gonna go to page sixty and point out, this is a good example of how things. This presentation is trying to combine a lot of information to, to hopefully make things even more clear. So if you take the skate park, which hasn't been budgeted, um, there's CCSD reserves of a hundred and eighty, seventy eight thousand. There's land and water. We have a grant, six hundred thousand. We had a tourism grant for the restroom specifically for forty seven thousand five. And then the Cambridge Community Council has three hundred and seventy four thousand five hundred for a total of one point two million. That may change when we get final numbers and go out for RFP and everything, and then that will be reflected in any additional budget requests. The one point two million ha, is this standard budget that we say this project is gonna be here. This is all the funding sources. So for current fiscal year, I have ninety four thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars, and this is what I'm gonna update in the budget report for CCS, CCSD reserves. That's what's left to spend. And three hundred and five thousand for Cambridge Community Council. So so far this year, under fiscal year expenditures, we have about four thousand dollars that we've been, have spent so far. Ninety thousand is what's left in the, the, the budget for that. Um, and then over to activity to date, this is trying to represent total expenditures to date. Though we have a hundred and seventy eight, the district has spent eighty seven thousand, um. You know, out of the three hundred and seventy four thousand five hundred from Cambridge Community Council, we've spent sixty nine thousand. So out of the one point two million, we've spent a hundred and fifty seven thousand to, total to date for the skate park.
Without even breaking grounds.
Correct.
Oh, yeah.
That's insane.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that's really standard for construction. We haven't do a lot of preplanning.
But if you build a house, that, that's exactly how it works.
Yes.
And, and, oh, excuse me. And the, the money that Cambria Community Council is holding for maintenance is not included here, right?
And so, so the contracts that are being done with whomever, concrete guys, fixing the, building retaining wall or whatever's going on, all of that is being done through the CCSD.
Correct.
And not through the skate park association. So you're the, you're the conduit for all of the funds.
Yes.
So you'll be, as you need, you'll be securing the monies that.
Well, it, somebody will, with, when the RFP comes out, then somebody will bid it, a contractor will bid it. And then we will work with contractor, CCSD will work with contractor, and it'll be our mess.
No, one, and, and my understanding is once the RFP comes out, then all the money from the Cambria Community Council will be deposited with us. Right now, I submit them invoices and they reimburse me for these pre-planning expenditures. So all the money is still sitting with Cambria Community Council. Once we sign a contract, that money will be deposited with us and then I'll just be managing the whole thing and the grant.
And the MOU that specifies that.
Yes.
Okay.
So it's kind of off budgetary stuff, but does the, does the CCSD and the, and the folks at the, um,
Cambria Council?
Cambria Council or the Skateboard Park Peoples, um. They're gonna have an opportunity to take a look at the final design. We don't have a final design yet, right?
No, I don't believe. Jim, do we have a final design for the skate park?
Um, no, we are still awaiting, um, Aaron Spahn's final.
Okay. Alright, so there's still time for them. If they see something, I mean, it would be really sad to take and build it based on a plan and if everybody hadn't had a chance to comment and there was something simple that could have been done to make it better. I mean, I've seen a couple of the skate, I'm not a skateboard park guy.
Yeah.
I break too easy anymore, but the, um, but I've seen some, I've seen the one down in, um, oh, shoot, I said Roy Brandy or Napol down there.
Yeah.
And saw, saw that one and we saw another one, stopped to take a look at it. And there, it's pretty interesting what they can do and I'm wishing them well because that's, that's a pretty tight lot, but the, um, but if there's something that you can do to take and make it better for as much energy has been spent on this thing by the community, I would just voice my support.
Well, there, we have an ad hoc and it's Harry and Karen.
Okay.
Yeah. And they're, and they're working very closely with Skate Cambria.
Okay, good.
The Community Council and everybody.
That answers my question. Okay, thank you.
So then, when we send out for the RFPs, does this group review the estimates that come in?
I don't know.
No.
It will be the ad hoc that will review the estimates.
Okay, and then legally, do we need to take the lowest bid?
Yes. Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
We have to take, yeah.
But what if the lowest bid is incomplete?
Then we don't take it because if it's not.
They have to meet the specifications of the RFP.
Right.
So that's why it's really.
Lowest bid that meets all the specifications. Okay. I'm good, thank you.
So this is a good example of a project with multiple funding sources and how I'm trying to account for it in a way that it's, it's, we spend a lot of time, this group spent a lot of time, R and I spent a lot of time on revamping this CIP list to what it is here in front of you, which it gives you so much information. And I know it can be confusing, but before we really, it, it gave you zero information.
And isn't that wonderful that you see the source of the fund?
Ms. Dawson. Yes. She did a lot of work on this and making it look as good as it did and helped me a lot with the presentation of it. Um, so I am proud of this presentation. It really gives you a lot of information. Um, compare, especially compared to what we used to put out there. Um, so you can see the fire engine is in there. So, um, you can see, and just for, for players, page sixty two, you can see the meter installed. That is a project that's pretty much complete, but under current fiscal year budget, we had about twelve thousand dollars left. And they're, they were doing a little bit of work. So that'll drop off next year. Um, but that's just an example of a carry forward project. Um, and you can see with anything with a B is something that is budgeted. Um. So, um.
Can I ask a question on the water meter project? And I don't know if it's just that people are, are, are taking their problems to whatever social media platform that they're using, but I've seen, um, an article in the Times about somebody complaining that the water bill's gone up four times what it should be. And my wife does the neighbor watch thing. I, I'm not sure what she's looking for, but but anyway, but she's on there and somebody was complaining yesterday about the water. I don't know why they don't just call the CS, CCSD and ask.
Wouldn't that be amazing?
It would be, however.
Well, but they all, they almost always do, but then, but, 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 but they go there first.
Yeah.
And, and I will tell you, my water bill was incorrect. And, um, it took three calls. I'll get it corrected.
Yeah.
Um, so I think people might, and, and I'm sure poor Miriam is totally overwhelmed because she's getting called.
Yeah, so there, there were some issues with timing of transitioning a lot of meters into the software system. So I know some of the, the meter reads, like it's a large portion. One month, they may have, it had been zero usage, right? So then the second.
Complain about that month.
No, and then the second month, it would be eight. So four is to the prior month. And problematic, right? I, I understand it's problematic and that you're, you know, but yes, they come when it's eight, not when it was zero. And so, and that was a timing issue with getting all the meters. Again, going back to what I said earlier, we have a very, very small, small staff and they, you know, we hire a temp to come in and try and do some of the data entry and what we had to do to get it all ready. But so that happened to a lot of people. Now, if it pushed them up into another tier of billing rates. of billing rates, because if you use more, you get, it can be pushed into a higher tier, Miriam is making adjustments to that higher rate, so they're not paying the higher rate and making adjustments to their bill. I mean, it does not change the fact that they got double, you know, in one month, they have to pay a double bill and and that stinks, right? Um, but all of those issues should be taken care of with this next billing cycle because everything is in Tyler in this.
Right.
Um, we have had a few that like aren't reading correctly or certain things have happened, and and we are handling those one by one. But my staff works really closely with the water department, um, so that, those are the biggest issues I've seen as far as like their water bill.
Okay.
Why it's like doubled in one month? Plus, we had a rate increase in there.
Yeah.
Why?
Yeah.
It wasn't, there wasn't.
No, it wasn't that much.
Okay, well, I just thought, I'm just on alert that somebody would actually be watching us here. That they would know to go ahead and we'd be good reinforced that if you have a problem with your water bill, call.
Yeah, and, and Matthew's letters always are saying that, please call us, please call us.
Yeah, but I understand that sometimes it's hard to get through, but you know, we have one guy answering the phone. When he's on the phone, you leave a message, he does get back to all the messages and it it can take a while, so, because there is one person answering the phone, um, so.
My bill was right, by the way.
So you're, you didn't have that timing issue. It wasn't every bill that.
What mine was, I had paid, I'm always two to three units. I paid for two units, but the current bill didn't have, it added zero, so it added previous units to the current unit, so it was an honest mistake.
Yeah.
You know, still, I don't use five units of water. I'm very water conscious, conscious.
You must be, because I use a whole lot more than.
Me too. I'm pretty much stuck at eight.
Yeah, me too.
For two, for the two months.
Yeah. Eight, yeah.
I'll take a shower every day. I mean, that's.
I don't take a shower, well.
Okay, so on page sixty three, I'm gonna go down. If you go down to the water department under price pump um, tank and booster pump station, so it's gonna be the second block of of table, the table of numbers. I'm gonna just point out the Stewart Street Tank Rehabilitation, so e- we had four hundred and fifty eight thousand dollars come, um, project estimate came from water. And then the EPA Community Grant of three seventy five, for a total of eight thirty three. Then I, under the additional budget request, I'm kind of separating out, and this is kind of speaking to you where in the previous presentation, I had multiple lines for Stewart Street Tank. Um, so the original budget was eight thirty three. Um, the additional budget request of two point three million is separated out, so we can see that we asked for more money. Um, or a total, if you look down there, of two point nine million dollars allocated to the Stewart Street Tank. Again, that two point three, I think we're gonna discuss, have more discussion on where we're taking it from. Are we taking it from reserves or are we gonna try and um, go out and get funding for it? Um.
No, Mr. Green told me it was in reserve.
Okay, well, but I mean, I just, I'm not I'm not always up to date. So fiscal year expenditures so far this year, we've spent thirty four thousand dollars on Stewart Street Tank. If you go to activity to date, we have spent two hundred and fifty thousand dollars total on Stewart Street Tank so far to date.
Well, then at the bottom, oh, third Stewart Street Tank Installation. How many tanks does Stewart Street have?
Two.
I'm sorry, where are you looking?
At the bottom.
Sixty three.
Of sixty three.
Oh, I, Jim, I don't know what that, I mean, that's a, a I don't know, Jims, do you know? I don't know.
That's what. I'm sorry, that was, that was kind of garbled. What was the question?
So on the CIP list, um, there's under a priority three. There's a line that says a third Stewart Street Tank Installation. Do you know what that is?
Sure, yeah, so for about ten or fifteen years, we've um, thought about putting some more domestic storage kind of specifically for firefighting there. Um, that's gonna come when we do our water model for our system, a whole system model, which MKN will be performing for us um, early next year, and so we're gonna kind of to look at our production versus consumption daily and whether we have enough storage adequately for fire flow. Uh, since our reduction of consumption dating back to like twenty fourteen, we use forty percent less, almost half as much as we did those prior years, so um, early estimates are that we have enough storage, but we're just looking into that. We're, we're, we wanted to do some modeling and um if we do put another tank in, that would be the place that's in our most uh, what we say are the hardest working water in the business right there, because that's at Logchill. So that goes via uh, rodeo grounds pump station up to Stewart Street, and um, that, that's basically where the majority of the water, sixty percent of the water is distributed for consumption in the community. So again, we'll look at that hydraulic model versus production versus consumption and um make a determination there if we do need an additional tank or more domestic storage. Does that make sense? It's kind of a long-winded question, sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Or long-winded answer, rather, I'm sorry.
Isn't there a a tour today at three of the Stewart St- Stewart Street Tank Installation?
Yeah.
That's still happening, Mr. Green.
Yeah.
Ye- yes, absolutely. Yeah, that was a reschedule from uh, last week's uh, kind of weather postponement.
Okay, so I go down page sixty nine. Um, and just point out, this is where you can see the detail on the ECMs. Um, SST Water Treatment Plant Projects. Um, so there will have the budget for all of the different projects. Um, what we've spent so far, or, yeah, what the, the current year budget, fiscal year expenditures so far, which is not much, you'll see a lot more in here as soon as I can get those payments out. And then activity to date, let's show you.
Right.
We spent one point four million on ECM one so far. We've spent fifty six thousand on ECM two. We spent eight hundred and twenty four thousand on ECM three, so on and so forth. So that's where you can see in a hopefully clear format of what we've spent so far on each project. That's, that's the intent of this presentation.
This is so much greater than the previous format.
Yeah. No, go on. I know. Before it, yeah, and yeah. It just, yeah. Um, so that was, so hopefully that's enough.
Yeah.
Um, and then it's go to page seventy three. This is where you'll see with your previous, this is all our debt that we have right now in the district. So the last one, the SST projects out of the twelve point one, we have paid three hundred and twenty thousand dollars on principal.
It's a thirty year loan, right?
So there, year in term, three of thirty, yes, it shows each growing, how far for the WRF uh, loan, we're a year twelve of twenty, so we have eight years left on that.
So we've paid principal and interest combined about um two million dollars back, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a good table, too.
Answers that question. And then this is just something I do, um, I I present it to every month, and this is the SST sort of overall on page seventy four on this dashboard, and I'll just speak with this people who are interested in the details, um. So I try and update this um, every month. So project to date, we've sent four point two eight million. Okay, okay, any further questions?
Yeah, we go, have one, it's not on here, but it's a more curiosity type question. Uh, we've, um, with the bonds that we issue, all the outstanding that we have, and with, and with the budget that we have, is there a threshold that that you try to hold to as to what that monthly payment can be? So like, if something got retired, let's say that one of these things, you know, those got retired and freed up some money. Is that what would trigger looking to take and go out and get an additional bond so that we could address some of these other things that are on?
I mean, I think we're talking about that now. I think we've been um advised that we probably would need um a rate increase to be able to take on more, like a substantial bond.
Another twelve million dollars.
Yeah, um, so they have a metric called the debt service coverage ratio that I know industry standard is what they kind of look at to see if you can our general fund has a really large debt service coverage ratio, um. So it's basically just how much income you have, how many times you can cover
Right.
your debt service. So I think, you know, typically like one point five is, you know, usually a minimum. We just saw one point five times, um. So if we were gonna go out for a big financing, which we're talking about as far as like some of these bigger projects to to just tackle them at once, hopefully get a lower interest rate, um. That analysis be done. I mean, we would work with our financial analyst, which we're working with Waterworth right now to do some of these calculations, and that would be part of the, the conversation, um. When it comes to some of these smaller loans we get for like vehicles and stuff, they don't really look good.
You could just throw money at that and it'd be gone, yeah.
Yeah.
But to, to, to get rid of a big debt, it's big enough to make a difference on the other end when you go out for the new loan. Yeah, that was kind of what.
Yeah, and I know Matt has, has inquired once about refinancing the WRF, then it wasn't um, good conditions for that at the time he inquired. I think as we're paying it down, we'll probably keep asking that question if the market shifts, like
Sure.
Would it be a good time to refinance and that sort of thing, so?
As interest rates, there must be a threshold at some point where if it's three quarters of a point or a percent or seven hundred thirty basis points or, or uh, percent where it triggers, where it makes sense to take and do that.
Well, it depends on what we're making on our investments. That's Yeah, that's what we usually look for.
Yeah. Yeah.
And a lot of times, it's pretty close. So it's like do you need, you want the insurance policy, or do you just wanna it, it, go, go in more debt? Okay. So anything else from the committee members? How about online? Do we have any public comment? No? How about in-house? Do we have any public comments? Okay, so, um so we made our comments to you already, so it says discussion and consideration. Will you need a motion for that?
We're probably just doing official.
Um, accepting it.
Accepting it and leaving it to the board.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor? Post? Nope. Alright, so future agenda items. I think what you were discussing, what you were asking questions, that might be um, something that we should put on the agenda to talk about. Because this committee could make recommendations to the board, and I definitely want to have um, Matthew here for that, right? Okay. So what, how, how would we, how would we word that? Discussion?
Good start.
Yep, discussion of
Possible divestitures.
I wouldn't even say divestitures, but possible, um.
Continued responsibilities.
Yeah. Or the district? Uh, we'll think about how to, how to do that. Um, the other thing that um Denise has talked with me about is we don't have anything on the agenda for next month, right?
I don't think we do.
Okay, so um, I would like to ask if you want to cancel the November meeting. And then we'll have a December meeting.
What's the date of that? Yeah, what's the date of December? You know, what's the, what's the November?
November seventeenth at ten AM.
I think.
Well, if there's nothing on the agenda.
Yeah.
It doesn't make any sense.
No.
But we'd be delighted to see each other.
Yeah. Well l- let's uh, we'll send out the um, the announcement, but um, we'll just, if you have stuff you, that you that we need to talk about, just let me know.
So that would be the fifteenth of December?
Is that one?
That would be the next.
Yeah.
Which I think historically has been canceled as well.
Yeah.
Well, because January is when you'll get the second quarter budget report.
Okay. Well, so let's tentatively cancel November and then we'll see.
See about December. I don't, I mean, something could come up, like, you know, Stewart Street Tank funding. I have no idea, so I'm not saying cancel it right now, but I think if memory serves, December is usually canceled too.
And I'm just not doing this on my own. This is, I've talked with um, the previous committee chair, and that's what he said to.
He said December too.
Yeah.
So when would you want to have discussion of possible continuing responsibilities for the CCSD then?
Well, when, when do we do? I, I would like to have that discussion before we do strategic planning next time. So January would be good.
Good question. And so, do you, does anybody recall, was the, the acquisition of the Fiscolini Ranch grant funded or bond?
Partially, partially grant.
Out of pocket from.
Public and private money.
Yeah.
But a hundred percent of the cost?
No, it was a combination of, I don't know the, the breakdown, but public and private money and, and banks, the uh, gave us eighteen acres of of land, and that counted a, a large portions of, of the, uh, final amount. So I don't know what the exact breakdown is, but it's combination.
Did I give you the plan? I think I did.
Your old plan?
Yeah, because that says it in there.
Okay.
Yeah.
You got stuff from the county.
We got money from the county. Yeah, and that's why the county tells us what we can and can't do. That's why we had to do the bathroom by the dog park, because the county gave us the money to buy that land.
They can't, can't they tell us what to do anyway?
Well, people on social media, there was a lot of discussion about um why did you put a, nobody uses that bathroom anyway. Why'd you put the bathroom there? Couldn't you use that bathroom for the skate park and lo- those kind of things on social media and, and they, those, the people who say those kind of things don't understand the backstory, and we try really hard to give people that information, but it, 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 well.
Not convenient to either argument.
Yeah. Well, I don't know with that, but it is. It gets distorted, so. Okay, anything else? Right. Alright, so let's go ahead and adjourn in the time. Oh, go ahead. Okay, eleven forty nine.